Okay. Bring it to meeting to order tonight as a special meeting of the Board of Health to address a dangerous dog issue. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the request of Karen O'Reilly, our Animal Control Officer, she asked me to request of the Board this special meeting to address a dangerous dog issue. She has concerns and would like the Board to deem Jake a dangerous dog because of three unprovoked biting incidents within the last year, according to the requirements of Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157.
Larry, I realize it probably would be good if we, the Board, introduced ourselves. We're not like, it's not like we're sitting up front like we might be if we were all in person, so all our squares look the same. So Barbara Beck, raise your hand.
Hi, I'm Barbara Beck. I'm on the Board of Health.
And Rich? You're on mute, Rich.
Yes, I'm Richard Arnold, also Board of Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
As so, I have provided you with all Karen's concerns. The owner of Jake, Ms. Baker, is present. And I would ask the Board indulgence for Karen to speak and present why she believes Jake should be deemed a dangerous dog.
Karen?
Hello. Good evening. As Animal Control Officer, I'm tasked with enforcing local animal ordinance as well as state animal control laws. Those state animal control laws are Chapter 140, Section 136A through 174F. And under those animal control laws, we have a definition for a dangerous dog, which is as follows. Dog is a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or domestic or own animal. So because I've responded to three separate dog bite incidents involving Jake belonging to Kimberly Baker, I unfortunately had to request this hearing. I understand you all have copies of my reports. They're very brief and I just like to read each one. If that's okay?
Yes, please.
On August 28, 2019, at approximately 10:00 AM, I received a report of a dog bite on Philip Dartch Road involving a child. Upon arrival, I met with Diane Murphy from Watertown Housing Authority. I learned that a group of children approached the dog Jake and owner. Jake jumped on Jason McHugh, eight years old, and bit him on the back of his left upper arm. Baker states that McHugh was scratched and not bit. Baker was issued a 10-day quarantine for Jake. And she cooperated with that. I think a picture of that was emailed earlier. You may or may not have seen. On February 12, 2020, at approximately 1:35 PM, I responded to Philip Dartch Road for a reported dog bite. Officer Minton responded prior to my arrival and he took all the statements. That, please refer to WPD Incident 20-3157-OF. I do have a copy of that. I can read it, but I couldn't submit it. In short, Kim Baker's son, Jordan Broton, was walking her dog Jake when the dog bite occurred. The victim, Alan Bochesny, was walking on Philip Dartch Road and Broton crossed the street in his direction. The dog began lunging and Broton could not control the dog. Jake jumped on and bit the victim in the right upper calf, causing puncture wound. I discussed with Ms. Baker that if there was one more incident, we would be holding a dog hearing. I recommended putting a muzzle on when he's outside her unit. She was agreeable and stated she would buy one when she got paid. And I subsequently sent a letter including that muzzle order to her. And I think that's, I won't read the muzzle order, but in short, I use the language from the MGL. "When removed from your premises, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device not exceeding three feet in length." And I did receive through word of mouth that she was muzzling the dog. On August 19, 2020, at approximately 5:00 PM, Michelle Spodek, a letter carrier, I believe she's on here, was at the back of her work vehicle sorting mail on Duff Street. Spodek states, "A dog on a long leash circled from the front of the truck, pulling on its owner and grabbed onto her right calf with his teeth, causing injury." Spodek asked for the owner's information and the dog owner stated her name was Kelly with a Y, Baker, and lived at 45 Philip Dartch Road. I was able to determine that the dog owner was Kim Baker at 41 and the dog involved was Jake. I previously issued a muzzle order to Ms. Baker on 2/21/2020 after the second bite incident. Victim stated that Jake was not wearing a muzzle during incident and later she was taken to Monamen Hospital for treatment of the wound. After issuing the 10-day quarantine, I spoke with Baker who confirmed the circumstances, but stated that the wound was caused by a scratch and not a bite. I then spoke with Spodek again and stated that she was definitely bit and not scratched. So based on these three incidents, unfortunately, according to the MGL, Jake would fall into the dangerous dog category.
Thank you, Karen. Larry, who do we hear next from?
I would suggest Ms. Baker, the dog owner.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. So I rescued Jake a little over eight years ago when I lived in Ohio. He was about nine months old and he's actually my emotional support dog. On, I want to start with the first incident with JJ. We were new to the neighborhood and I was walking Jake and I remember JJ and maybe one or two other children asking if they could pet him. And the regret I have is not having Jake trained when he was a puppy because like a lot of dogs, he wants to greet people. He wants to jump up to them and kiss or lick their faces. And so he did, he got excited. He loved his children and he did jump towards Jason. And as you can see in the photo, Jason got scratched. And I remember when Karen came over to see Jake, Karen O'Reilly. She and I talked and I remember her saying, if it was a bite, there would have been the puncture wound of the tooth or teeth going into the skin. So I was under the impression that you know, that was definitely a scratch. And just to comment about the children in the neighborhood, today on our evening walk, there were seven, seven children with us. They all love Jake. They were competing as to who could go into their apartment the quickest to get him a bowl of water after we walked, since he was thirsty. I gave them all a treat to give to Jake. And there's at least 10 kids in the neighborhood, I have all their names here, who want to pet Jake every day when we go outside. And today I thought it was kind of coincidental or ironic. This morning, when I was walking Jake on Lexington, there were these two little boys coming out of their apartment with their mother. And they said, oh, can we pet your dog? And I said, yeah, he loves children. I don't know how old they were, but it was, the one boy had marks from stitches that were right here. He just recently, three weeks ago, got bit by a border collie or something. And I thought the little boy was so brave to want to pet Jake. And after I thought about it, hours later, I actually felt that Jake helped that little boy because he was traumatized by a bite. And then he sees this big dog and is brave enough to ask if he can actually pet him. So that's all I want, well, actually JJ, the boy in the first incident, him and Jake are pretty much best buddies at this point. So now I'm going to move on to the second one, which was absolutely horrible. My son suffers schizophrenia. He's 30 years old. He was helping me because I have a lower back issue to walk Jake that particular day. And I didn't realize he was actually hearing voices that day and he must have been so focused on those voices like he is even right now with his symptoms acting up currently. And the only thing I could think of was that he was in such a hurry to get back in the apartment because he tends to isolate and hide. So that he ran right across the street and him and the gentleman, whose name I think might be Alan, collided. They did have some words because it was a really stressful moment. And the police officer came and then Jordan and I felt so bad about what happened and we both wrote Alan a letter. And I had his address because it was on the warning or the sheet I got from Karen O'Reilly. So I put our letters in an envelope and went to hand-deliver them to his house. Him and his wife heard me outside, so they answered the door. And we actually had a really good conversation and I was able to apologize in person. And they empathized with me regarding Jordan. So after that, Karen met with me, we talked about the muzzle. I went on a couple of days later. I tried my hardest for a good month to, I put that muzzle on Jake. He got it off. I had it on, you know, the tightest fitting that it could go on and he took it off every time. And one time it was lost during a walk and then I tracked it down. And then I just sort of gave up on that because he could take it off every single time. So then, you know, several months went by and this last one, we were walking down Grant Street, approaching the small mail truck. And I did not see, I'd like to address her by name, is Michelle. I didn't see Michelle. And I actually have a shorter leash. It's not a long leash. It's about six feet. And I normally keep them really close to my side. I think what happened was as we approached the back of the mail truck, he just went over towards her and I think he jumped on her. And I saw that she had earphones in and she was just really into, you know, focusing and sorting mail and doing her job. And I immediately pulled him back. And I apologized so many times and she was frantic as anyone would be, you know, if they're focusing on their job and all of a sudden they get jumped by an animal. So I did see her leg and to me it looked like a scratch from his claws. So then I stayed probably 30 to, I don't know if I'm estimating right, 30 to 40 feet away from her. My gut feeling just wanted me to, you know, to get Jake home. But I said, can I give you my information? And I think she was just still frantic that she didn't really answer me. And I remember her making a phone call and I was just trying to be patient. And so I yelled out to her, can I please give you my information so I can get him home? And so I yelled out Kimberly Baker. And then I thought I heard her yell back. So your name is Kelly? I said, no, Kimberly with a Y. I think I gave her my phone number and address. And I don't think it was written down correctly because the numbers were just a little bit off. But Karen O'Reilly was able to find me and confirm that it was Jake. And I'm just looking at my notes here. So I didn't get, I didn't get the chance to apologize to Michelle and I'm so sorry about that. I just want to look to see if there's anything I'd like to add here. So I recently went home for a visit to Ohio and I'm actually planning on moving back within the next five months. So I just wanted to state that. And I mean Jake has been with me on airplanes, sitting right next to people. I just think that these were unfortunate events that all happened within almost exactly a one-year period, looking at the dates. He is nine years old. He's older. And I just really wanted to point out that all the neighborhood kids really love Jake. And I think that covers everything on my end. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kimberly.
You're welcome.
Michelle, thank you for joining. Would you have any, would you like to make a comment about the incident?
I would, if that's okay. So what she said about what happened to me was partly a lie, I guess. First of all, I didn't have headphones in, could hear everything around me. I did not see her coming because I was behind my truck. And the dog came flying around the back of it and bit my leg, actually bite, bit it. I had teeth marks on my leg. It might not have been punctured to the point where I was bleeding out a lot, but there was definitely teeth marks on my leg. And I was, yes, I was very frantic and very emotional that I kind of threw myself as she was pulling the dog. So I kind of saved myself as well. She did lie about her name. She said it was Kelly with a Y, specifically said with a Y. She lied about her address to me. And she did lie about what type of dog it was. She said it was a boxer bulldog mix. And I'm the one who asked her for her information because she was about to walk away. She said, oh, it was just a scratch, no blood. And then she kind of just left. So I was kind of yelling for her to give me information. So I was able to at least, you know, have that for work. Dog, again, did not have a muzzle like she was supposed to, he was supposed to. So everything that was said about me was kind of like a lie. Even, even all the information that she gave me was a lie. And I'm lucky that the Animal Control was able to find her because the dog had bitten two other people before me. So that's really all I have to say. It was kind of a very traumatic experience for me because I've never been bitten by a dog. And to find out that it was a pit bull that bit me and it's supposed to be an emotional support dog, I just, it's just mind-blowing to me, I guess. That's it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other? Diane, are you here to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Diane. I'm from the Housing Authority. And the only, the only incident that I was aware of was the incident with Jason McHugh. And the family, Jason, had stopped me and had told me, I looked at it, I called Karen. I called Jason's caretaker. And at that point, the reason why I called Karen was because I wasn't sure if it was a bite or a scratch. He was shaken, but I couldn't tell by looking at it which of the two it was. And unfortunately, Jason was not able to say either. And so because I couldn't make a decision and he didn't know what happened, he just kind of caught him off guard so completely. That's why I called Karen because I'm not a professional, cannot make that determination and the poor little kiddo could not remember either. So that was the only incident that I was aware of.
And this is Barbara Beck. I have a question. Was Jason the first or the second incident?
He was the first.
Thanks.
Anthony, are you here to make a comment? Statement?
I was just listening and I really am unfamiliar with all three incidents. When I found out that there was going to be a hearing for a dangerous dog. Of course, it alarmed me. Anytime there's incidents involving children especially, we do have, you know, lots of children at the Housing Authority. So anything like this is, of course, very concerning to me. It's unfortunate that, in my opinion, the dog wasn't complied with the muzzle order, it sounds like, you know? And it could have avoided a third incident. So I'm definitely concerned as well that the dog is a pit bull and having three incidents like that.
So it's, thank you. Kimberly, can I ask you, it sounds like for the last several months, the dog has been out without a muzzle. From your statement, because it wasn't just this one incident that he was out without the muzzle, but you've been unable to keep a muzzle on him and he's been out sniffing out a number of times, obviously, since he must go out every day without a muzzle. Is that true?
Yes, I have not been able to keep that muzzle on him. But I do believe that the first incident was a scratch and that the last one was also a scratch.
Karen, can I ask you to bring the Board up to stuff on what the significance of scratch versus bite in terms of the law? And what do you feel?
Whether it's a bite or a scratch, it's still, it would still be considered injury, physical injury. But the protocol, as far as the rabies follow-up, the 10-day quarantines, all that are the same for a bite or a scratch.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
You, that's why I wanted everyone to look at the picture. I'm not a doctor, but if you look at the picture, you could judge for yourself, I think.
But I think the owner was making the distinction between a bite and a scratch. And I wasn't aware that in terms of risk, that was an issue.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes?
These three attacks within one-year period were all unprovoked. I just wanted to have that confirmed by Ms. O'Reilly.
I can't say for the first one because I understand that was a group of kids. The little Jason, the eight-year-old, did tell me he was bit, not scratched, at the time or after, when it was one-on-one. The other kids told me, oh, it was probably just a scratch. Then I saw the photo. So I'll let you judge there. So it was kids involved, so I can't say yea or nay. Was it provoked or not provoked? Were they swarming around him and they scared him? I don't know. The last two are definitely, both of them were unprovoked on the adults. And both of them are the same scenario. He's pulling on the leash, trying to get at a person to bite. And that's concerning to me.
Thank you, Karen. I have just a couple of comments and a question. From my experience, you know, dogs attack or bite out of fear. You know, it's not, it's usually protective and it's fear-based. And the tendency of one dog to do that more than others is a major factor. Based upon what I've seen, the dog definitely has a tendency to attack or to protect the person they're with. Maybe crossing, you know, coming around the mail truck was startled to see a person there and didn't instinctively attack. Again, with the children, I'm not sure, but maybe being surrounded by kids, it may have raised their fear factor. But whatever it is, the fact that it's happened three times is very concerning. Obviously, a dog, if they really wanted to cause harm, these injuries would be much more severe. Whether it's a scratch or, let's call it a nip, all right, we'll call it. It's still based on the same active activity and reactions. So there's nothing to say that the next time won't be much more severe, frankly. There's no indication, one way or the other. The second, the second thing is I am concerned that, that she lied to the, to the mail carrier. You know, that's just, that's just not good behavior in a situation like this. That doesn't, that doesn't, in my mind, that doesn't reflect well on Ms. Baker's ability to follow your guidelines or the law, whenever, you know, when it requires muzzling for the animal. And it doesn't give me faith that this won't happen again, based upon her act as well. And my last bit is a question for you, Karen. If you wouldn't, if you could remind me, what are our options if indeed we do determine this to be a dangerous animal?
I will read them. If you just give me a moment. If the hearing authority deems a dog dangerous, the hearing authority shall order one or more of the following. This is very long, so I'll try to.
You can paraphrase if it's simplified.
Humanely restrained. That's number one. Number two, that the dog is confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog. Number three, that when the dog is removed from the premises, the dog shall be kept securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or tethering device not to exceed three feet. That the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in the amount of $100,000, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons, et cetera. Four, that the owner, or five, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide the license in authority or animal control with permanent identification. That's not an issue, I don't think. Or humanely euthanized. That's the last one. That's about it. In short.
Thank you.
One thing that concerns me about this, and I agree with what you said, Richard, is that these incidents happened a while ago and there's been a real lack of ability or will to keep the dog under control. I mean, even the second incident shouldn't have happened. And I mean, I think it's so unfortunate that your son has those difficulties and those challenges, but it makes me wonder whether it was even appropriate in the first place to let him be in charge. And then since then, to not muzzle the dog for a period of several months makes me concerned that this dog, that the owner has the ability or the willingness to really keep the dog under control.
Great. Mr. Chairman, if I may? I I was also looking at the order and just wanted to confirm that the dog was required to be restrained or other tethering device, not exceeding three feet in length. Per what Ms. Pollock was saying, this dog was on a restraint that was about six feet in length, which again goes back to the point as to whether or not Ms. Baker can effectively control the dog while in public.
I'm sorry, Larry. So that was in Karen's initial letter?
This is, this is the muzzle order that was sent on February 21st.
The second incident.
The second incident.
And then also, Karen, you had mentioned first you recommended, but actually it was an order. Is that correct?
We talked and I did recommend it and then I followed up with the with the order.
I take it Ms. Baker does not have a private outdoor space such as a yard or fenced-in area?
I don't believe so. It's a townhouse style.
You're muted.
Common space.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just as a means of guidance to the board, I know that you're asking questions to make some determinations, but there are two things that are before you really, number one, whether or not you should declare Jake a dangerous dog. And secondly, if you do so, then the action which you are going to take. So I think that Ms. Arnold's line of questioning is really helpful to assist you in reaching a determination. Thank you for indulging me.
And Karen, is this done, is this done in a two-part way? A determination is made and then the options are discussed or do we do it all at once?
Two parts.
Two parts. So it, let's, what I would suggest is, Rich, could I ask you to put a motion on the table and then we'll see if there are any comments around it in terms of whether or not to declare, declaring this a, this dog a dangerous dog?
And what's the name of the animal one more time?
Jake.
Jake, okay. I make a motion that we declare Jake a dangerous dog.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Have we, anyone, anything that we haven't heard that would pertain to that? Motion? Kimberly, we're not able to hear you. You have to take yourself off mute.
Ms. Baker, you're muted.
We can't hear you.
Go down to the bottom of the screen.
Or does Larry unmute her?
Okay, did I get it?
Yes, yes.
I'm, again, I'd like to state that Michelle was frantic, frantic. I did not lie to her. And as far as my son walking the dog, I, I couldn't walk that day. I have disc degeneration in my back. So, you know, if I had to do it again, he wasn't really showing symptoms that day. But that's what I figured must have happened because he was running across the street, just, you know, trying to get in the house. Yeah, it's unfortunate that there's not a yard. I, I have to take Jake and my other dog out to go to the bathroom, so if I had a fenced-in yard, that would make everything a lot easier. And I, I think those were the only things I wanted to add.
So I think that as the board decides, we, we need to be aware that we are, our role is to protect the community. And I know there are unfortunate events that happen, but as a dog owner, you're responsible, I believe, for making sure that you are providing the adequate With that, I would ask the board, can we take a vote? Barbara?
You want to vote individually or should I just make a nomination, a motion to vote? Because I think that we already had the motion from Rich.
We had the motion, so we can all say at once?
All right. Second.
Hi. Yeah, I did, did we, I think, but we did have a second. Barbara's second. So I, hearing all in favor, the motion passes. And now, Karen, we'd love to hear any recommendation you have for how to handle the next step in terms of what to do with the dog.
Actually, my recommendation was going to be to enforce the the muzzle order with the same language I had. I'm a little fact that Ms. Baker said she cannot muzzle him kind of rules that out, I guess, so. Because if that was ordered through the hearing authority, if there was any violation of that muzzle order, the dog could be seized and fines would start at $500 and/or criminal complaint, I believe. So that's why I was going to say to reinforce that muzzle order. But to be honest, if she says that's not going to work, I would have to rethink it. So. Yeah.
Karen, are you aware of options where dogs like this can be rescued in some way, where a dog has a history like this?
Well, I'm, I'm not an animal behaviorist, so I can't really speak too much to that. I just have to go on the facts and the history of the dog. He is, I think, nine, she said. I don't know if he had, has a previous history or not, because she's relatively new, at least to her address in Watertown. I'm not sure. She's been on Philip Dodge maybe for a year and a half. I'm not quite sure about that. So that's all I know. And he is an older dog, so I'll leave it at that.
On your, on your initial thoughts, there, I'm sure there are different types of muzzles out there. I know that there's a big difference between hard muzzles, soft muzzles. Is it possible that we could, or I should say, Ms. Baker could could employ a professional who could actually find a muzzle that would work for this animal? Because I'm of a similar mind. If I thought that muzzle would work, that would be my preferred recommendation. Every time you leave the house with that dog, you have a firm muzzle in place that you know works. That would, in my mind, take care of this issue.
Well, I, I agree with you, would certainly take care of it. It still is concerning that the dog was unmuzzled for a period of time. There was no contact with Karen about, are there other ways to other types of muzzles? So it just concerns me about the potential, again, for non-compliance.
So could I ask, Kimberly, could you address, do you have any recommendation that we ought to consider for how to keep your dog safe?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, um, the muzzle that I got is, is sort of an open one. And I'm listening to what everyone's saying and he was able to sort of use his paw to sort of pull it off. And I think there might be more like a tighter muzzle that they even use at the veterinary offices that are closer sort of to the skin, like this one is sort of a thicker one. I would absolutely put that on him every time before I walk out. I really hope that you would all consider letting me try that because I didn't realize, you know, when I went to the pet store, I bought the one that looked like it was highly recommended. But maybe it was just sort of too loose and too open. He's very smart and, you know, was just able to pull it off every time.
I think that's every dog's initial reaction when a muzzle is put on. I've worked in vet hospitals and had to use muzzles at work and that's the first thing they're always going to do. Just take some training and some time and some patience. You know, there's the basket muzzle, which is the muzzles you'll see on police dogs that look kind of scary, but lets them breathe and do everything they need to do. And then there's like the soft muzzles that are more tight around their muzzle. Those are easy to get off. So there are different types of muzzles out there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I've been looking at the requirements, which is on page three. And I would suggest that we include several of these conditions. The first off is that the dog be confined to the home. Secondly, if the dog has to leave the home, that it be muzzled with a muzzle that cannot be removed and is securely fastened to the dog, as well as there must be a tether that is no longer than three feet in length with a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds. Further, that Ms. Baker provides proof of insurance in the amount of not less than $100,000, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, or damage or injury to persons, animals, or property resulting from these acts. I know that and she provides information to the same, to the animal control officer within one week.
I think, Larry, I would ask, we could, might consider that actually asking Karen to verify that the dog can go outside and the muzzle does work within a week. I don't think at this point we can trust that an order we make will be carried out from its, from the past history.
Yeah, I would ask Karen if she's amenable to doing something like that, actually setting up an appointment with Ms. Baker and meeting her outside and spending some time with her and the dog in a muzzle. Firm that the dog is not moving the muzzle. Maybe that, do you think that would work and are you amenable to doing that?
Are you talking to me or Kim?
To you, to you, Karen. I wouldn't want to assume that you were, that you would be able to do such a thing, but.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yes, I would, I can do that.
Ms. Baker, do you understand, do you understand what we're discussing right now?
Yes, I do.
I also think we need to be prepared for what our response would be if there's non-compliance. And I think like even a single incident of non-compliance would be complete non-compliance.
I agree.
Larry, how would you recommend we think about that?
If there's another incident here, and I hate to say it, but it is going to be clear that Ms. Baker cannot effectively control the dog or is taking the actions to effectively control the dog, then it may relieve the board with no other option than to order the dog be euthanized.
So I would make the comment that I don't think we want to wait for another bite if we have evidence that Karen of the dog not being unmuzzled outside, that's enough. That would be unacceptable.
I would just agree with John. I didn't announce myself earlier, but I'm the Assistant Director for the Watertown Housing Authority. And I would have to agree with John that if, if there were to be non-compliance with what Larry just discussed with any of those orders, I would feel uncomfortable any other way.
In fact, that this is, Kimberly, the fact that you're in public housing and on public, you also have responsibility to all the other, maybe a heightened responsibility, I would say, to the other residents of that, of the apartment complex.
Yes, I do understand that. And I don't know if Mr. Anthony Di Giovanni, I mean, I understand these things that have happened are absolutely horrible. But I want the housing director to know that, that all of the children in this neighborhood love Jake. The seven of them were walking with me today. I know that doesn't change what happened. I want to do everything I can to be responsible. And I want, I want to make this right and I don't want Jake to be taken from me and euthanized. So if, if you are all willing to let me, I think it's just being discussed that Karen would meet me. We would make sure he cannot get the muzzle off. I'd be willing to triseperal. I need to get insurance and the leash cannot be any longer than three feet. I hope I'm understanding everything.
And we want to see that ideally you would get the muzzle immediately, but Karen's going to need to see that within seven days.
The dog not leave the house until the muzzle has been established.
Is that realistic, though, to not leave?
No, they have to go to the bathroom. They should have a time, certainly.
I'm sorry, Larry.
I will suggest that with the exception of the insurance, all other conditions issued by the board tonight must be complied with within a 48-hour period.
I, I agree with that. There's no reason that a muzzle can't be purchased within two days. I think we also need to put a time limit on the insurance as well. And I actually don't have a feel for what would be reasonable for that, but perhaps two weeks. One week seems kind of.
I would say a week. If I may respond to Dr. Beck, Dr. Strauss, that we have a maximum of a week because this is a matter of urgency. It is not something that we can wait on. And there are several agencies and avenues available to get insurance as long as the will is there to get that insurance. And without creating that urgency, given past history, I don't know if there's going to be significant compliance.
I would also say for the insurance that it be for, we should specify the time period and that if the insurance comes due, we want to see it renewed before the due date. So there needs to be, I think the Health Department may need some continued follow-on with respect to insurance.
And then if I can add to the board's, make a recommendation to the board, for as long as Jake is resident in Watertown and under the jurisdiction of the of the Watertown Animal Control Officer.
But can I, can I say something? One other thing is that now if Jake is declared dangerous, it follows him throughout the state. So if he moves to Belmont, it stands. Um, so in the past municipalities would just ban a dog from their town and you go to the next town and create problems. So I just want to be clear that this is enforceable throughout the Commonwealth. But would I know if anything's going on in another town? Probably not, you know, only if something happens.
Um, are we also saying, I think I heard that until an adequate muzzle is obtained, um, Jake should only be outside for minimum amount of time to do his business, but otherwise he needs to be inside.
And, and I agree, and she should just avoid contact during those walks. I, you know, if, if indeed, you know, she has a habit of the neighborhood kids joining her, I, I think until he's muzzled, that, that should not happen.
Yeah.
So, so there's a lot of details to this.
Right. And, um, uh, I don't know to the extent, uh, Anthony, the housing authority can help us, but if you certainly, you know, this order will be in place. And if any housing employee, housing authority employees see that it's not being carried out, Karen needs to be informed immediately.
No, I would have, inform her immediately.
Um, I have, I'm still a little confused about the insurance. I understand that it will apply as long as Jake is in Watertown, but how do we know that that's ha- actually happening, Larry? Is there something that we should be doing to make sure that that insurance is being paid and continues?
But I believe she will have to provide proof of insurability. And we can also, um, add a condition. That is why I said that the insurance must be active while he's within our jurisdiction.
And, and that proof that it's active needs to be provided to the health department on an annual basis or whatever.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Rich, do you think you could begin listening while, while, as we go along?
I should have been taking notes. Um, uh, let's, let's get the items again. Okay. So, so we're talking about the demonstration of a muzzle that's functional within 48 hours. Um.
Provision.
Including meeting with the animal control officer to, to certify that. Uh, liability, personal, is it personal injury or whatever, insurance? And the amount of $100,000.
Right, for insurance caused by Jake, I mean, for injury caused by Jake. And the three-foot leash.
Yeah.
Insurance that was going to be within that, uh, one week. Tamed with him one week.
Um, failure to comply with any of the above will, could result in immediate seizure of Jake.
And euthanization.
Well, I think at that point it's for us to determine what happens to the dog. I mean, it could include that, correct?
Yes, you can.
Um, the, uh, Austin, sorry.
Insurance needs to be verified to the town on an annual basis.
Right.
If I could add one thing, I would just ask, um, if animal, if Karen, if you could provide those documents to the, the housing authority as well. Proof of insurance, um, proof that the muzzle is going to work within the 48 hours. And the other items that the board has listed.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, one other item was that animal will, will, uh, not, uh, uh, will be, all attempts will be to keep the animal until the muzzle is obtained. Um, sufficient muscling is obtained to, uh, away from other, uh, citizens and, uh, only outside for, uh, necessary path through.
Excuse me, may I add something?
Yes.
There was a, um, specification that Larry had mentioned about the strength of the leash. Could we, could we verify that as well? I believe he had said something about a leash, uh, with 300 pound strength. I just want to make sure that if the dog is muzzled, uh, that the leash is strong enough to contain him, should he break free from a leash to avoid the jumping, scratching stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And I, I think in this, given the history, um, that, um, the, uh, Jake needs to always be handled by someone who, um, is able to, uh, maintain his control. So we.
Can I, can I ask one question of Karen? Do you know offhand, um, in Massachusetts, what the likelihood of obtaining insurance for, um, the different types of dogs? I know that just, and I don't know the answers to this, but for the dog is a pit bull, I believe. I don't know that it, how difficult it is to obtain, uh, insurance in the amount of $100,000.
There are certain companies that are restrictive on breeds. Um, there were legislation trying to ban that, but there are. Um, so it may take some time and go through different insurance companies to find one that will, um, insure a, a dog, pit bull type dog.
Will the insurer know that it's a dangerous dog?
I believe there's, um, questions on insurance paperwork that will ask if there is a history. Bite history. But there are companies out there that will insure certain breeds.
Well, can I add something? This is Kimberly, Jake's owner.
Yes. Your thought?
Um, yeah, I've, I've never looked, I've never looked into insurance. Um, and I, I don't know, he, he looks like a pit bull, but I, I think I'm going to have to get a DNA test. I've never had that done either. I mean, I'm not sure if, if you know that answer, Karen, but I think I'm probably going to have to have a DNA test because, uh, just because he looks the way he looks, I'm, he's not listed as a pit bull because, because he's got an underbite, which is a boxer tendency. Um, so I, I think I'm going to need more than a week. I'll start checking into it right away, even tonight. Online, I will do everything I can to get it within a week. But someone earlier had mentioned about two weeks. Um, I, I just think that sounds a little more doable, but I'm not sure since I've never had to, I, you know, it's going to be my first time inquiring about the insurance.
Um, I'm not sure that the breed will be as significant as the fact that the dog has a history and is deemed a dangerous dog.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
Kimberly, did you adopt this dog originally? How did you come into possession?
I, I rescued him. I literally rescued him off the street, um, in Ohio. He was walking across the busy street with a leash dangling on his neck. And I pulled over into the gas station to make sure he wouldn't get hit by a car. Um, he was following a man over. And the man said, do you want him? He's my son's dog. He's not taking care of him. He's living in the yard and eating out of the garbage can. So in my mind, I thought, I, I'm going to take this dog and I'm going to find him a good home. But then once we had him, we, we ended up falling in love with him and keeping him, and that was over eight years ago.
Okay. I just, I just needed to confirm that you didn't have any adoption papers that might have given you help identifying his breed or his, his birth, but that's okay.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, Maureen, I'd ask you whether you think you have everything you need to record this.
We can't hear you, Maureen. Maureen?
Follow this. I have pages trying to follow it. I'm going to my desk.
Okay. Make a motion with that, though?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I think what the motion the board can make is pursuant to the requirements of section 157A for sections two, three, that the owner be required to comply with the requirements of sections two, three, and four. And provide evidence to the same, to the animal control officer, except that the insurance shall, within 48 hours, except that the insurance shall be provided within one week. If the owner of Jake, Ms. Kimberly Baker, can show evidence that she has made good feat effort to secure insurance, but is unable to do so within a week, an application can be made to extend that period for no longer than to one more week.
So we're, we're not looking at sections two, three, four. Does that, your, that covers all what we were talking about?
Yes, it does.
You mean, I took all these notes and I don't have to say, state every?
If, if you want to add, then, um, should the owner feel to comply with these orders, then action may be taken pursuant to section seven and that an order for the dog to be humanly euthanized be issued.
And again, that was, that was, um, was that mass general laws, the 157A?
Yes. It's after 140, section 157.
157A4 or just?
Yes.
A4. All right. Now, so I make a motion that the board accept that Kimberly Baker will abide by mass general law, 157A4, uh, sections two, three, and four. And she will provide evidence of the same to the animal control officer. Except for insurance for, um, liability and, and injury to, for $100,000, of which she will provide proof within. If she tried, if she, if her efforts are unsuccessful after one week, she may apply for an extension for an additional week to obtain the insurance. If she is unable to follow the mass general laws and sections two, three, and four, um, the animal is liable for seizure and, uh, possible euthanization under section seven.
Did you, I didn't hear 48 hours for the first part. Maybe you just want to add that.
Um, first article to be completed within 48 hours.
My second.
Mission, Larry?
Um, it's two. Two, three, and four. You comply with, with $48.
Can, can I add at the end if, uh, we don't, or someone reports that the dog is not biding by the, the, the order? Because I, I, again, I want to support the housing authority. If they feel that this is not happening, that, that would. We take.
John, I'm reticent just because then you're taking somebody's word or an observation and, and, you know, I'd be great if someone could snap a picture of that happening. I just don't know if we can have anybody state that they saw the dog without a muzzle, and that would be sufficient for us to seize the animal and possibly euthanize it. Uh, I'm a little worried about that.
I would think you would have firm.
If two people witness it, uh, then I would say, yes, I, you know, that's fine. I just, I just worry about personal, you know, personal gripes or, or that type of thing.
Can we say with, with sufficient evidence or?
Yeah.
Reputable or, I don't know, there's some, some way, but I want to be, I want, I think it's important that the housing authority have the ability to enforce this as well as Karen.
Oh, yeah. And I think, I think when we did say failure to comply is seizure, we can, we can determine that failure, whatever way we think we see fit.
Okay. That sounds right. That's, that's fine.
If we had someone from the housing authority in particular report failure to comply, I think we'd consider that very seriously.
Yeah, within their, within their profession, within their, their role, their job.
All right. So I'm glad we had this discussion so that Karen, uh, Kimberly hears that. Um, it's not, because sometimes Karen can't get to where it's, how something's happening and that's not, that, that doesn't mean that we're not going to take evidence that the order's not being applied, uh, um, carried out seriously. Okay.
So I'm, I am understanding everything, but my question is like tonight, you know, to take him out one more time. I, I have that muzzle that I talked about that he, that he's able to take off. Um, I, I will put that on him and I'll, I'll try my hardest to keep it on him. Um, I'm just, I'm worried because that, well, there's two days and I'm gonna, I'd like to get a muzzle that he can't get off of, off of his face. But you know, like now I'm a little nervous just about taking him out tonight or tomorrow morning. And oftentimes I'll just put him right in the car and we'll go around the corner to the park. Um, I, I don't know if anyone has a suggestion as to what I should do, you know, immediately.
Well, I think Kimberly, we, um, we had, we had stated that if he needs to go out to do his business, um, but that's it. You know, no, no recreational walk in the next, till you get the muzzle in place and, and avoid other people. If, if you see somebody coming up, um, and saying, you know, you just need to say, I'm sorry, you can't come near my dog right now. You just need to, um, if you want to keep this dog, you need to, you need to just do that.
Engage in social distancing with Jake.
I'm sorry, Larry.
Engage in social distancing with Jake.
Absolutely.
Six feet, no, three feet. So he's got a shorter distancing than us humans.
And, and the leash, the leash thing, Kimberly, you can do right now. I mean, you know, you, you can leave here and go to Petco and get a, and get a really strong, short leash. You know, 300-pound tensile strength is really not that difficult if you get yourself a nice, thick, sturdy leash. So, so you know.
I actually, yeah, I actually bought one recently. I don't know if it's three or four feet. I'm going to check when I get, get there.
Alright, then choke up on the leash and wrap it around your hand a few times. You, you know, you have an idea what three feet looks like.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to, do we have a second for the motion?
I make a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Just one thing I'd like to inform the board and Ms. Baker. The law does allow for judicial review of your decision tonight within 10 days. Should Ms. Baker seek a judicial review?
Any other items of tonight? Folks from the Housing Authority for their participation tonight. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I want to thank the board for everything you've done tonight. Thank you, Michelle, for coming, coming in tonight to the meeting as well.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Baker will receive all the written order in a certain period of time. Do we?
Karen and I will get it done tomorrow.
And the clock starts when Ms. Baker gets the order?
Yes. In fact, the immediacy for the shorter, in fact, the clock starts now actually because the board had made, has made its decision. Ms. Baker is present and aware of the board's decision. The, or the letter, the appeal period is what is affected by the receipt of the official order. So 10 days after she receives the official order, she may file for judicial review. But all the other conditions that have, the board has imposed starts now.
Thank you, Larry. And yes, and thank you, Michelle, for, this is not the easy part of your job, I know. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we turn the meeting time. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.